Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivi- justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence for Gary M. Johnson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Kevin Michael Winters, a 2002 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Item 2A on the agenda is a proclamation in recognition of Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week. The appearance of our buildings and grounds has a significant impact on the environment for suitable learning for our students, working conditions for district employees, and is a sense of pride for our community. The Maintenance and Operations Department employees contribute to the school family and community by upholding professional work standards, receiving timely training, and approaching all tasks in a strong collective spirit of teamwork which contributes to their overall work effectiveness. They exhibit diligence, patience, and professionalism in adjusting to new challenges and situations that occur in the school buildings and grounds. To honor the Maintenance and Operations Department employees of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Schuess, the President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board, express our deepest gratitude hereby, declare the week of September 12th, 2016 through September 16th, 2016 as Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week. We have a recommended Board of Education action to declare the week of September 12th through September 16th, 2016, as Maintenance and Operation Appreciation Week. Is there a motion for that action? Mr. Leon, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Eight-zero. Thank you. Pardon me?
I was asking if anyone who was here, and no one's here, so we'll get the proclamations to them. And most of them aren't here because they're busy cleaning our building.
Yes. Item 2B, summer accomplishments. Dan and Don and Dawn were going to, and Jason too, did I miss? Yes, I did, Ms. Jason. Well, tell us what they did this summer.
Well, I guess I'll kick it off. I think my slides might be the first ones in here, so. So we have a highlights of our summer accomplishments. This by no means is everything accomplished, but it's a good list of the major items. And don't panic, I'm not going to read this slide to you. It's about 14 projects on here that our information technology crew accomplished. We were kidding recently, we feel like we got about three years' worth of work done in one summer. And I think what I can say to the Board and the community and our students and staff is that we are racing into the 21st- about our mission in technology of helping people to have access to information, to have the mobility, and to be able to access their records and their work, you know, 24/7, wherever they are. And so, first item there, we implemented 3,000 Chromebooks. Rolling those out was a huge task. It required upgrades to our wireless network, which we accomplished. We're really happy that more and more students are going to be able to have access to those critical tools that allow our teachers to differentiate instruction using that technology. Skipping down a couple, we upgraded two of our Project Lead the Way labs. You know, I feel like we've been chasing our tail in Project Lead the Way, and we're finally have gotten it to the point where we think we've put the technology in place where our kids can have the best access to the things they need to be successful in STEM and using computers in that area. We made major upgrades to the high school and the junior high. In many years, those buildings have not had access to wireless. While we did, and I'll talk about it in another slide, we did get approval to completely rewire the high school and the junior high in Main Street so that they'll have wireless. In the interim, we went through and we put new switches and routers in place so that we can have much more wireless at the high school than we ever had before. We implemented a new upgrade to our network also. We had a lot of outages last year, and our students and staff were very patient with us. Part of that was due to the fact that something could happen at Roxborough Road Middle School that would take out the entire district. And it was the way the architecture of our network was set up, and we implemented a thing called Layer Three. And what that allows us to do is if something happens at Roxborough Road Middle School, it's going to stay at Roxborough Road Middle School and not take out the high school. So that kind of technology was necessary when you have such a large district. We migrated all of our employees to the cloud, all their emails on the cloud. Again, they can access that 24/7. And then I'll just touch on one more item here. One of the things that, we had auditors come in recently and review our entire information technology and made recommendations about the security of information and about protecting the stability of our network. And now that we've implemented all these devices, it's really important that the network be reliable and that there be some redundancy in it. And so our first step in that was making sure that we created a backup for our Internet. So today, if we get our Internet from the RIC, if the RIC goes down, we can automatically switch over to Verizon, and we won't lose Internet connection in our classrooms. In connection with that, we also have moved all of our backups to the high schools. So automatically, every day, if something ever happened to this building, all of our data is backed up at the high school. And so, I could go on and on about- the 21st century, and it's going to benefit our students and staff. On the Maintenance and Operations side, again, there's about a dozen items on this list. And a couple things, just real fundamental. We've had summer school to junior high and the high school every year for as long as I can remember, and we haven't had a chance to do a good job painting classrooms and doing basic maintenance in those buildings. And so, it was a real treat to have access to those buildings and get some of those things done, not to mention building the new entryway in the high school that's going to improve our security and control of people coming in and out of the building. But it also allowed us to do some basic maintenance, like painting. The first item on the list is about our high school, our junior high school roof on the auditorium, as well as the gym floor. Those projects are underway, and the roof's just about done. The gym floor will be done by the end of the month. We did get a state approval for those wireless projects I talked about, and we got our paperwork in for the Bear Road project, which will be, the voters will consider, on October 18th. We did all the planning and preparation for that as well. One thing that's very important halfway down the list is we completed all the documentation for our new mandated emergency response plans and begun the process of district-wide training. And so, again, safety and security is our top priority, and we're making sure that we do the things we need to do in order to keep our security systems up to snuff. And you'll see, one of the items on the list is that we got SED approval to upgrade our access control system, and so we'll be working on that. Finally, in the other three areas that I supervise, the business office, transportation, and food service, we had a productive summer. You know, obviously, we closed the books and got ready for this year's, you know, accounting process, but our auditors are in this week concluding on their audit, and they look forward to reporting to the Board next month. Transportation, we hosted this year, that isn't a spelling error, that second bullet point, the NIAP Bus Rodeo. And that was an interesting event where drivers from 20 districts across the state came up and competed in tests of driving ability, and we hosted that at our transportation center, and that was a very successful event. And I'm happy to report, we have got GPS devices on all of our vehicles now. And next month, we'll be upgrading our routing system. We historically have had GPS on one system and routing on another. By next month, we'll have everything integrated, so we can look at the route the driver was supposed to travel versus the route they actually traveled, and we can look for efficiencies in the routing system and manage the system that much better, I think, to make sure that, you know, we're managing that fleet optimally and tracking the fleet as closely as possible. In food service, you know, I'm happy to report that we've continued to close the gap in terms of the profitability. The community knows we've struggled with the new nutrition standards and trying to maintain profitability, or I should say, obtain profitability. And we've lost money for a number of years in the food service operation. This year, we broke even, and I think we're finally turning the corner, and I'm real happy about that. And that's pretty much it in the areas that I supervise. Any specific questions?
So, all the district-wide computers have an extra-
Yeah, so, I was thinking about, when I was talking about backups, I was talking about the data, all the information. So everything we do resides on our network or resides on the BOSI's network. And so, what we've done now is we've created off-site backups for all data, so if anything ever happened, we'd be able to restore our data very quickly. And we're also in the process of creating, and we've created some redundancy with the Internet, which I talked about, and we're going to be working, we got a grant this year from Al Sterpi, from the Assembly. They've been very, very helpful, and we're going to use that money to create a redundant data center so that we can take that backup information and get our schools back up and running very quickly, should there be an event here at the district office.
Okay, so as you know, we've been really working very hard at our reading initiative that's kicked off this summer. Our teachers in K-6 adopted a new series, Journeys, or they were allowed to purchase trade books. So we had the look at the Balanced Literacy Initiative this summer, starting off with what is balanced literacy and working words and also assessment. And so, all of the modules that our teachers are going to go through, over 150 have already participated. So that's great news for us, so that when we do it in the fall, we have less teachers to pull out of the classrooms to make sure that same balanced literacy in all classrooms through a reader's workshop. And so, the three consistencies there are not the materials, as I've said time and time again, because you can teach kids from a soup can to a cereal box. It is the curriculum, the content of our skills, and that also with the skills, the strategies, I'm sorry, thank you, and the structure. So we're really excited about that. It's a little bit slow at this point in time because this is new for the company HMH, and so it's slowly coming in, but people are getting their books and getting excited about that. So, the second one is the introduction to the grading, and SED, interestingly enough, Matt just showed us a memo from State Ed asking us to look at our grading. And we've been in studying mode for over a year and a half now at what are the best ways, best ways to grade? And we have a committee of over 48 people that are looking at that throughout the district. Introduced ways to look at learning differently and how to give grades towards that. So we just kicked off for the first time this year with our staff, K-12, that were asked to come and look at a different look to grading. And that work will continue throughout the year. Roadshows are going to each staff on September 28th, their half-day. They're going to share what standard-based grading is all about, so that'll start to- Co-teaching workshops, as you know, are a big initiative of inclusion, all kids in the classrooms, and having teachers push in services. Workshops went on- ... and with teacher leaders who led those workshops. Project-based learning happened up at the high school. 20 of our high school teachers went through learning so that they could integrate that into the classroom, and BOSI's was at, and they will continue- ... We have many more that have been through that in the district, but this year, 20 added to that. How to Build a Better Test and Making Friends with Data. Donna Marie Norton did this, along with, she does How to Build a Better Test, which goes into all of the initiatives above, along with Making Friends with Data. She did with Lisa- As they said, a lot of times, data intimidates people, except for Donna Marie. She loves data. And so, they were teaching teachers how to look at that as evidence. When kids come to us, they have lots of evidence that they bring that help us to put that whole picture together, learn to differentiate instruction based on that. So that was a big initiative there. Special education probably goes back up with our co-teaching. We, by it, SU has been wonderful to us, always offering us grants to send people, and we sent six more teachers, principal, from Roxborough Road Elementary, to learn about how to be inclusive of students who have needs. They went and said it was an eye-opening experience. And every year, we've sent people, that's how they have- Then you can see all the curriculum work that we've done. I can say that this place was rocking this summer. There wasn't a room to be had or a parking spot to be had. So we did a lot of work, and you can see all of the curriculum that, and along with, and Dan has more to add in his next slide. Questions about what we've accomplished?
I have some questions. And what I see here, there's things that involve a lot of change that make people go, things like the project-based learning and the inclusive classrooms. What kind of challenges have come across because of all this?
It does involve change, and I think our people have been very, very brave to work through that, and it is a challenge to shift our minds towards looking at kids differently in classrooms and meeting their needs within a classroom. So, the only thing I can say that we've kind of noticed is that people are just making sure that we've done work all summer long, walking the buildings and just be, and reminding them that believe in themselves, they have the right tools to do this work. It's just, they're anxious for all of the change, whether it's a reading change to a grading change, but we're there to support-
I'd just like to add one thing. Yes, they are being brave, and yes, this is a lot of change in a lot of areas at the same time. But I think the common way that we approach this, Dawn mentioned, there's been study committees. Jump right in and say, this is what we're going to do. It's been a year and a half to two years of studying these different initiatives, bringing people's thinking along, helping them to understand the reason.
And with the project-based learning, you will cross subject lines to give a grade for math and then one for- How has that been working, planning that?
It definitely is in all our subject areas, in elementary through high school. So we have lots of people doing that kind of work. So with the grading, what we're trying to get across is, when you're doing project-based learning, there's a lot of cooperative learning, but you still have- And so, taking a look at that and then back, not necessarily grades, but feed process and the content that they're going through. It's all new. Grading is new. I, there up at the high school, has done a lot of work, staff, the most, and that's who took it on this summer, so I think they're going to see how do you grade kids and how
Great, because I know that's what the employers were asking for, you know, not just study for a test and get a grade. They want employees who can work in teams to accomplish goals.
Problem-solving.
Problem-solving.
Right.
This summer, every Friday, you would receive an update regarding class size from me, and I think Mr. Schuessel likes numbers more than anyone. At this point, you've replaced Bob Crabtree. But for the district-
Okay.
At least K-6, class size, we were trying to make sure that we would be updating the Board as well as stay in line with the guidelines that we've set forth. In kindergarten, we made a commitment to try to stay at about 22 as a class size, first and second grade up to 24, third and fourth 26, fifth and sixth up to 27. So the reports that you would get each week, you would start to see some of these class sizes get a little bit higher. A little bit challenging this year because we made another commitment with the special education model, returning all students to their home schools. So with that happening, along with our policy for babysitters, numbers were a little bit more tricky as far as trying to stay as tightly on top of them and be as consistent as we have in the past. But it looks like we've really held true to what we were committed to, and the numbers are still supporting the new model in special education that we've adopted this year, returning students to their home school. So it looked like our class size is favorable at the elementary level. We did add some sections, as you've seen, over the summer, and whenever you add a class, you have to take a look at the special areas that go along with it, so art, music, physical education. So at times, you've seen bits and pieces, a point-two or a point-one here or there to support teachers, and if they're shared staff, you have to make sure you coordinate that as well. My learning plan houses all of our professional development. So what you saw from Dawn was a lot of the workshops that were being organized and planned, and my learning plan, between Alicia on one end and then me on another, kind of oversee what gets approved, what does not. We've tried to make sure that we're prioritizing or creating a focus within my learning plan. Co-teaching was a focus this summer. Differentiation was a focus this summer. The reading initiatives was a focus this summer. So trying to make sure that the things that are coming through, the things that are being planned, the things that we're sending our people to are in line with the overall district goals. The big challenges this year, and I'm going to piggyback, Mr. Keegan, with summer school, for the first time, I believe, from what Connie Terrose quoted me, 25 years she's had special ed summer school at the junior high school. So that building has really not had the overhaul in the summer that most places have been able to achieve. So we were able to do that with the junior high and the high school this summer. And in order to do both of those, summer school for special education- Mr. Shaw at Rox Middle for hosting, but transportation with Matt Conti, also working with John Ward in Maintenance and Operations. So that was that shift, but we shifted our general ed summer school to Beville this summer. That's been a first. We haven't done that either. So coordinating that in the prep and working with transportation, then finding out some things where certain roads are being repaired all of a sudden, and rerouting buses to try to make sure our timelines are met. We were pleasantly surprised at how well it went, even though our students were going at least 20 miles away, sorry, 12 miles away.
Yeah. Scared me a little bit.
Sorry about that.
Cut through to her.
But we were pleased with that, and there were 344 students that took place in our summer school. Some of those students took multiple classes, but again, overall, very successful. We talked about the special education delivery model, returning students to their home schools. This has been something that's been an ongoing process that we've been monitoring and adjusting and trying to hold true with the co-teaching that we've talked about, making sure the two parties, special education teacher and general education teacher, are able to work together and be able to learn how to best meet the needs of students. And trying to hold true to only having a special education teacher co-teaching with no more than two general education classroom teachers, and making sure when we make adjustments when we get near certain thresholds. The final thing on here, and I believe one of the things that you'll be approving tonight, that stands for English as a New Language, ENL. In the past, you've seen ELL, English Language Learners. Before that, you've seen ESL, English as a Second Language. One of the things that's been increasing steadily in the district is our population of ENL students. Last year, we had a total population of 74. Right now, we are about 86 students. And students, families, people moving into the district, the new procedures for ENL that the state has put on us are significant. One of the ones that is a little more trying is, before you could have a brand-new student in 10th grade and a brand-new student in 12th grade be in the same pull-out ENL group because they're brand-new, the way the state has set it up now, you can only have a two-year span, a grade-level span. So even though they're both brand-new, you can only have a 10th and 11th grader together or an 11th and 12th grade together. You cannot go across the third-grade level span. So you have that problem at the high school, and you have that at Rox Middle, we have fifth through seventh. The elementaries, we have multiple teachers there right now, so it's not as much of a problem. But, again, trying to meet the needs of what the state requirements are, and these are all new, and when you talk to BOSI's, they say you have to show that you're making an effort. So when you have new kids come in and they are at the beginning level and they need a certain amount of minutes, it really makes it so you can't have certain groups together, and that's why we're looking at adding an additional staff member for that because we've reached our threshold. With that being said, the only one thing that's not on there, because it's more of a two-year, but we did do some work this summer, is School Tool. The one reason why we didn't have our big opening is we trained over 700 teachers, counselors, administrators, social workers, everyone in the district on School Tool, which is replacing SIS. Considering the amount of people that were involved, I'd have to say we were able to pull it off. There are some glitches still here and there, but the person that we're working with, Antoinette Brown, comes in, if not weekly, but we'll be meeting Dawn and I with her this Friday and to go over some more things that BOSI's can do for us with this new system. It's very powerful. There's a lot more that it can do that we're right at the tip of the iceberg, but those are a few of the things that we've worked on this summer. Questions?
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to, before I get started, talking about some of the specifics that are on the list for human resources. I would like to just sort of point out that everything that's on this list ultimately boils down to making sure that every room in every building of every school has a highly-qualified teacher with the right certification and has all the support they need to be the most successful that they can be for our kids. I feel that that's one of the most important things that we do here, is to make sure that we have the right adults with the right skills. So to give you a rundown, the first few have to do with some of the updates and mandates from the state of New York. You may not be aware that effective July 1st of this year, just this summer, the state has implemented something called CTL-E. It's a continuing teacher and leader education program that changes and replaces the previous system for specifying the details of professional development for all of our teachers, administrators, and our Level 3 teaching assistants. So that email, actually, with all the directions for staff, actually went out this morning to all buildings so far. Nothing exploded, so people are going to be working on that over the next three weeks, try to get themselves registered in the TEACH system. As we go forward, the district is going to be responsible- As we go forward, the district is going to be responsible for monitoring, instead of 175 hours every five years, only 100 hours. But the criteria for the professional development time to count towards that 100 hours has become much more rigorous. And so as we navigate that over the course of this year, this year is sort of our free year where we're supposed to get ourselves acclimated. There are no consequences for any missteps or things that don't work out the way they're written as far as the mandate goes. We're clear, but our goal is to be completely, fully compliant on time by the end of the school year with all of the pieces of the mandate. And so far, I think we're on the right track with that. We have also some other additional mandates. The staff snapshot is a new system with additional information that the state requires for us to put into the TEACH system, into what they call Level Zero. Donna Marie, she's been fantastic with making sure that the district is compliant with all that. She's the data queen, and so we get everything she does. The normal, everyday, sort of run-of-the-mill things that we do, they're very important, but they're just part of our routine, updating our databases. You know, we have teachers hired, we have teachers that gain tenure, we have new teachers that are hired every year, and they all go through, we have to monitor every one of their movements, see their names every board meeting, coming through with appointments, changes in locations. Those all have to be monitored and updated for the new school year. Monitoring certifications, make sure everyone has what they need to be eligible to be in front of students. And the last part, I think, is singly the most important part of my job, is to make sure that we are hiring quality staff. And we have 91 people that were hired new into the district this year. That's to replace people who have retired or left. Or also in that are the long-term substitutes that are replacing the many, many, many staff members who go out on maternity leave every year. You know, for those of our teachers that live in the district as well, we can look at the job security, that in a few years, we'll have some more little ones coming into our elementary schools. And so as you can see, we hired a large number of people in all of our areas, including one principal. As you know, he's been with us a while, but technically, this summer, we officially appointed Mr. Leighton Road. And so. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I thought of one question for Dawn.
Sure, yeah.
Just wondering how our drivers did in the rodeo.
Our guys did pretty good. None of them took a top spot, but they performed pretty well.
Okay. Full accountability, Donna. Donna Marie. Full accountability report.
Hi, everybody. That data is not a typo where it says 1415. And when I sent it in, I think it was Marilyn that actually said to me, "Are you sure you mean 1415?" Yeah, unfortunately, I do because State Ed doesn't come out with the report cards until way late. So when I do this presentation, I'm actually talking about data that's a year old. There is some information at the end of the presentation I'll show you that's about this past year's testing because of a couple of schools and some different accountability statuses, but I'll clarify that when I get there. Okay? So accountability reports are moving targets. I've changed the format of this report for this year, so if you've been a board member for a little while, it's going to look a little bit different because the tests look a little bit different. So they changed last year. The company that creates our 3 through 8 tests is now Questar, no longer Pearson. Pearson lost the contract with New York State Ed. No claps? No? Yeah. Thanks. The exams are now a tad bit shorter. There are no time limits on the 3 through 8 exams, which was really a bit of a nightmare for people that were trying to organize, you know, in the buildings how they were going to test students, but it worked out okay. There were more teachers that were involved, at least they tell us there were, in the question development. And then the reports that came out, they came out very quickly, much more quickly than they used to. 75% of the questions were actually released online. You can see them all on Engage New York. And 100% of the constructed response questions, the essay questions or long math questions, were released, and that's very new. They've been increasing that every year. They'll never give us all of them because they like to reuse the questions that they like the best, but at least it gives us an idea of what the tests look like after the fact. Please note that test refusals continue to rise. Science, we only test in grades four and eight. And I also want to point out to you that our 8th graders are kind of an interesting group of kids because we accelerate our 8th graders in math as well as in science. And because we accelerate them and they're taking Regents exams, they're not included in here. So you take your top-level kids out of the science and the 8th grade math results, and we still do really well. So that's, you know, good to hear. Science, we don't really see a lot of issues here. The African-American group, you do see a slight drop in them over the past, well, 13, 14, and 14, 15. Everybody else is pretty much flatlined in science. On to district secondary. That's the ELA Regents. And we've gone to a Common Core Regents over the past couple of years, so there's been a little bit of change in that, but we really have not seen a significant change in the scores, even though it is a Common Core exam. That's good news. So there's our three-year results. Our students with disabilities, the performance index for them is below everyone else, but it has been relatively stable over the three years. And then our district secondary math results. This is very interesting. This depends upon the highest grade a student gets on any math exam. So if a student takes algebra and geometry and does better on algebra, then the algebra score is the one that's counted. Students don't have to take trigonometry in order to graduate, so we get a smaller number of kids in that. So this is the highest math score that a student gets, and that's how that's accounted for. You'll also see the drop here for the students with disabilities, but pretty stable over the three-year testing range. So two buildings that I want to bring to your attention had to do with local assistance plans, which I'm sure you're familiar with, but I'll kind of reintroduce you to what that is. So local assistance plan, that's a school that performed below a certain level over a few years in a row. Used to be a Cini status, school in need of improvement, and that's been changed. There are now new designations, focused district, focused schools, and the lowest level would be LAP. LAP is like your first indicator that something needs to be looked at. So Roxborough Road Elementary School was a LAP building last year. They are not a LAP building right now, so they got themselves off the list. Very proud of what Rocks has been able to accomplish. They are in good standing this year. I'll show you a chart in a second. Roxborough Road Middle School, however, is coming on as a LAP. We've already had multiple meetings. Dawn's been there, and Dan, and David Shaw, and his whole building team on what we're going to do. The subgroup that Roxborough Road Middle School got identified is actually the white students. A little unusual, but that is the subgroup they've been identified on. So let's look at Roxell over the three years of this report, 13, 14, and then 15. And you can see that there's that rise in the 14, 15 school year. They also apparently did pretty well, at least I'm supposing, because they're off of the LAP list. We don't have the school report cards. They give you the LAP list before they give you the school report cards. So they're not a LAP building right now, and you can see that little rise. Actually, it's a big rise. Okay? And then here's Rock's Middle, and you can see the decline as far as that goes. So from 97 on a performance index down to 79 in 2014, 15. And then there are a couple of areas to watch based on the 2016 state test. Like I said, they don't give us the school report cards, but we can kind of get a sense of what's going to come on down the pike. So there's two buildings that are potential LAP due to the cut point, not making a high enough performance index. That's going to be Rock's Middle again, and it's the economically disadvantaged students, any of the students that have free and reduced lunch. And it's also the junior high. And in the junior high, it's the students with disabilities in math and in ELA, okay? Not performing at a high cut point. Problem with the math is that those accelerated students aren't included in that group. And if they were, I think the results would be significantly different. Not that we don't want to accelerate them. Potential LAP due to a gap greater than 100 points. This is brand-new this year. We've never seen something like this before. The state is dinging you if your gen ed kids are more than 100 points higher in performance than your students with disabilities or any of your other ethnic subgroups. So in 2015, at Lakeshore, you can see that the gen ed population there scored 163, and the students with disabilities scored a 53. So it's a greater-than-100-point gap. You get dinged. And then it happened again in 2016, only by 53 points, or no, by 103 points, but it's greater than 100. So my thought is that they're probably going to be a LAP building too and have to do a plan. We'll wait until we get that, but it's coming down the pike. Any questions?
Might have one or two. I don't know if there are questions. I'll start with a question. Are you still allowed to, and the accelerated students in the science and math, are you still allowed to use the Regents score with the 8th grade assessment?
No.
You used to be, though.
Yeah, they used to combine. No.
All right. Is it their science here, the accelerated science?
Don't know with the junior high, who's accelerated. Is it their science? Okay.
And just...
Science isn't a problem.
Right. I'll make this a question. You started out mentioning the refusals causes to be unclear. Up here, it still does this to us, though. We don't know the impact of the refusals on this LAP up here.
I mean, you know, I got each of the refusal letters. I keep copies of them, and I run big lists that have to be updated every five minutes, you know, during that whole testing time. And I do have people ask me, you know, what kind of student is refusing the exam? And what I actually see are the very high-level kids that had scored fours before, not taking it, and then the very low-level kids that had scored ones. So we're kind of left, I think, with that group in the middle. How that impacts our results.
And I think that's what they're seeing. Everybody's seeing everywhere. There's no typical kid that's refusing. There's no consideration of a moratorium to use it for LAP, then? I'm being a wise guy. I mean, they're not counting these.
From your lips to State Ed's ears.
You know what I'm saying? They're not counting these for purposes of evaluation until, what, 2020, but they're going to count it.
Against the school.
For all these refusals. It doesn't make sense.
I think it's a way for them to hold our feet to the fire.
How do you feel about, I'll make a question. What do you think about that?
So I was, I don't know if you remember that. And, you know, I don't like having our feet held to the fire, and I don't like using data as a hammer, I think, is what is happening.
Donna Marie?
Mary?
Do you want to go? Go ahead. I just had a question about the data from the state is delayed to get, and that effect on it. By the time we get it, the kids are already...
Well, what they gave, yeah, but what they gave us very quickly this year, because remember, they test in May, so there's really not much that you can do at the end of the year. But honestly, in July, we were already getting individual student test results, which was fantastic. And teachers were able to get, we call them distractor reports. So they were able to see what question and how kids did on each question, whether they picked A, B, C, or D. So we could do data meetings, and we did this summer on that data. That was quicker than we've ever had it before. But you're right, those kids are now moved on to the next grade. So we always look at, say, in 2nd graders, and then we look at the 3rd graders as well because those are going to be our next grade team.
You said you were talking to the Roxborough Middle School group about, you know, the lower grade in the English area. Was there anything, you know, that really stood out as far as why things were going down?
He's got a whole plan that he's putting together. I don't think it's solid yet. Are you on that, Dan? Sorry. I'm looking at Dawn. Sorry.
So we got multiple groups together to go over and produce the LAP plan for Rock's Middle. Roxell, we took a look at their plan because they were a LAP school just prior, and some of the students are moving up to the middle school. So we took a lot of lessons learned from Roxell and have incorporated that. And one of the things that we're looking at is using the plan to help drive the BPT plans and goals for the building. So everything is, they're going to have consistency instructionally and things that are delivered in ELA. And also, we're looking at math because math was just a smidgen off.
Well, infrequently, when you put all your energies into ELA, math starts to slide. So you have to be, you know, careful about, you know, making sure. I mean, you know, from me sitting in, you know, with Dan on those LAP meetings, and I don't think the plan is solid yet, I know Dave is still, you know, having meetings about it. But what I saw was a lot of very good work that was happening all over the building, maybe just some more coordination of that work to bring it together as a full group.
So they looked at, you know, the exam?
Oh, I gave them more data than they knew what to do with, so, yeah. Yeah. I gave them a lot of data, yeah.
Thank you, Donna Marie.
Longer than five minutes, Mike, sorry.
Yeah. We'll talk later.
I thought he laughed for your presentation.
Comments from the audience? Connie, nothing, right? Okay. Item 4A, Board Committee Reports, comments. Any committee reports from anybody on this?
Legislative committee is going to meet Wednesday night this coming week at 6:00.
Excellent. Mary, policy is when?
Policy is next Monday, 7:00, 5:00.
Other committees, reports?
Just the one thing, we were, I was able to go to the Smith Road, it was rescheduled. Their Quarter Mile track was opened this afternoon, and it was attended by a lot of kids and parents. They were very excited to be there, did a great parade with the principal leading away with all his kids around him. It was very interesting. And it was just a really great event for them.
Very good. Thank you.
Bring it up. I'm sorry.
Two weeks ago, I was able to go over to the NSCA office for our new teacher luncheon. We had over 70 people new to the district this year. I know I was there with Mr. Leone and Ms. Owens, so that was a really good time. Always good to see new teachers that were students in our school district come back. I really think that's part of what makes this such a special place. People like to stay here, and I think that's a really great thing. Second, Mike and I last week got to go to a leadership conference dinner hosted by the Central New York School Boards Association. It was about two hours long. It was a really great opportunity to connect with vendors that work with different school districts as well as other superintendents and board members from our component school districts in the area. So just a really great event, and we had a keynote speaker talk on leadership. So we kind of walked away with some good information on that.
Former board member?
Yeah.
Yeah, from on the Dogger Central. Now he's in the, he works for Mactley, the Manufacturers Association. He's their trainer on leadership. on leadership. He did a brief thing for us, and he's doing a half-day workshop on October 1st, so very good, very good evening. Item 5A is the consideration of, pardon me, what did I skip? Oh, my goodness gracious. I'm in trouble now. Annette.
I just have to comment on the opening of school. It wouldn't be right if I didn't say something. And so I think the word out there, and we're hearing this from people in the buildings, that it's been one of the smoothest openings we've had in years, other than the fire at the Junior High. That gave a little excitement to the evening of opening day, and I was a little worried that we weren't going to be able to have school in session for the second day of school, but fortunately, that was all taken care of in plenty of time, and it was business. But the opening really went smoothly. I think overall, the feeling from staff and students in all the buildings is very upbeat and positive. I was able to visit every building last week, many classrooms, and I think I saw about a half to two-thirds of the new teachers that Mike was speaking about, and I'm very pleased to say I think we've really hired the best of the best, and I think we're going to have a good year, so.
Thank you, Annette. Item 5, Routine Action Items. 5A, consideration of approval at the minutes of the regular board meeting of the Board of Education, August 22. B, consideration of classification and placement of disabled students on August 24. And C, consideration of classification and placement of students in home instruction programs for several dates in August up to September 7. And D, and I don't know if Don, if you want to comment on this at all, the consideration of the contract award for field lighting replacement?
No specific comment, other than the lighting that we have at the field now is aged out, it's inadequate, and this new lighting will allow us to be much more energy-efficient and provide a much higher-quality lighting. Kind of, it's the capstone on that facility in terms of making it the premier high school facility in Central New York.
And the funding is from...
The funding is from our budget, basically. Yeah, we've been, we've been working diligently to put money aside. You know, when we did the turf project, we needed to upgrade the turf. At that time, ideally, we would have upgraded the lighting, but just didn't have the funding to do it. And so we've been saving our money, and we think this is a good, long-term investment.
Excellent. What kind of lighting, do you know?
Yeah, it's the same lighting that you see in many of the professional stadiums. The company that is a local, central New York company that has managed the lighting and developed the product, and it's very high-quality, very energy-efficient, and I think it'll be noticeable to any spectator at the stadium.
There's also a school district just to the west that turned theirs on last Friday night, so I thought I'd mention that. They are, they're amazing, those lights are just staggering, so.